Inquisitive with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a public hearing which is on the adoption of Trunk Highway 14 official map number 21. Who is presenting? Ben Griffiths? Mr. Griffiths. Is this your last presentation?
No, sir. Actually, I'll have one on May 2nd as well.
Okay, well then we'll save our goodbyes for the May 2nd one.
All righty, let me get organized here. All righty. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Honorable Commissioners, and Madam Administrator. For the record, my name is Ben Griffiths and I'm your Olmsted County Planning Director. The public hearing item before you this evening is the adoption of the Trunk Highway 14 official map, number 21, and the associated multi-party agreement. We have a PowerPoint presentation which was included in your packet, and we'll review that at this time. Prior to the Chair's opening of the public hearing, county staff will be glad to answer any questions that y'all may have. All right, let me make sure I can do this because I always mess it up. Look at there. Okay, so we'll go over the corridor study recap, what is an official map, because this is probably the first time that most of y'all have had an official map come before you. They don't come up very often, but when they do, they're very important. We'll also go over the official map's effect on future development. That's probably one of the concerns you'll hear from any of the property owners that are within the area, boundary area, or that are close by of the affected area. We'll also have some pictures of the layouts, some various graphics to explain that, and we'll also have a quick review of the adoption process that y'all will be asked to do tonight, and it has to happen in a certain order. All right, so we'll first review the Trunk Highway 14 corridor study recap. No less than three corridor studies have been conducted over the past 20 or so years on this section of Highway 14. The most recent was completed in January of 2021, and this graphic representation of the intersections and improvements comes from that study. There were several findings that came from that study, and five of them are to note. The first was that it was determined that implementation of a long-term vision would be incremental and occur in stages over time, mainly due to the availability of funding. Second, the timeframe for full implementation is expected to be at least 20 to 30 years. So if anyone's expecting bulldozers and dump trucks to show up, you're going to have a very long wait. Third, implementation is likely to consist of three stages each related to the development of one of the three proposed interchanges. I hope I do this right. There we go. And you can see where those are with the diamonds there. Fourth, each stage will advance progress towards Trunk Highway 14 becoming a high-speed, limited-access freeway over time, and will include work on both Trunk Highway 14 and local roadways that provide access to the proposed interchanges. Please note in the box at the bottom of this slide that construction of either the CASA-3 or CASA-5 interchange could occur first and would be dependent upon traffic conditions and development patterns at the time the funding is received. So what exactly is an official map? Official mapping is a tool provided for in chapters 395 and 462 of the Minnesota statutes that establishes authority for counties, cities, and towns, including townships, to conduct planning for future development, public improvements, and the zoning of property for future use. An official map designates the anticipated boundary of lands needed for future projects such as roads, schools, parks, et cetera. An official map by statute establishes no right of ownership by a road authority in the mapped land. Land or easements needed for future public use must still be acquired. The purpose of an official map is to establish with some certainty the right-of-way that will be needed for a future roadway project, so that landowners can plan use of their property knowing the future acquisition limits. An official map establishes a process to limit the construction of new structures on lands that will be needed for a future public project that has been planned, and also provides the road authority with time to negotiate an agreement if a permit or building construction is submitted, a permit for building construction is submitted. An official map encourages cooperative efforts between the landowners and the road authorities to reach an agreement that will benefit both parties. There are generally five elements of the official mapping process. First, the boundaries of the official map are typically based on a study that establishes the need and design concept of the project. Second, an official map is prepared by a licensed land surveyor and adopted by local jurisdictions with planning and zoning authority over development such as counties, cities, or townships. Once adopted, official maps are filed with a county recorder who notes the existence of the map on all affected property titles. Fourth, an official map is not a programming document. It does not indicate when a project may occur. And five, given the preliminary nature of design work that is done to support a corridor study, the ultimate right-of-way acquired may vary somewhat than what is included on the official map. This slide provides an example of some of the features commonly seen on an official map. In this case, another official map from Olmsted County, number 16, for CASA-44 and 60th Avenue Northwest. Note that the official map will identify both existing right-of-way, highlighted in red and yellow, and the anticipated future right-of-way, highlighted here in green, for both the roadway and a future trail bridge, as well as planned locations of future local street connections and highway frontage where access will be controlled, all of which are dimensioned. Many of you are probably wondering what effect an official map will have on development, and we'll review that next. After adoption of an official map, building and zoning permit applications within future mapped right-of-ways are subject to the provisions of the official map statutes. By statute, a road authority is provided up to six months to initiate proceedings to acquire title or interest in a property before final action by a local zoning or building authority on the permit application is required. If the road authority does not initiate proceedings to acquire the property or an easement, or establish an agreement related to interim use, the zoning or building permit application may proceed under normal procedures and standards. Here's the process that is followed when a permit application is received for a building or structure within the area of an official map. A landowner applies for a zoning or building permit. Staff responsible for zoning and building permits identify the site lies within the area of an official map. The zoning administrator or the building official notifies the road authority or road authorities, if there's more than one, of the proposed permit application. The application will typically follow one of two tracks at this point. Track A on the left is where voluntary negotiations are initiated by the road authority with the applicant regarding future arrangements to address the interest of both parties. Track B on the right is where an applicant can request action on the permit. This will lead to an initial denial of the permit due to conflict with the official map, and the applicant can then appeal the denial. I'll pause here for a second from the slides and point out that these duties and responsibilities of the land use authorities relative to permit processing and road authorities relative to engaging with permit applicants regarding negotiation for the future right-of-way are memorialized in a proposed memorandum of understanding between Kalmar Township, the City of Byron, Olmsted County, and the Minnesota Department of Transportation. This MOU was included in the packet on pages 18 to 26 and lays out the specific duties and responsibilities of each of the four parties relative to the processing of those permit applications. MINDOT, Byron, and Kalmar have already signed the MOU, and the board will be asked to approve it as part of y'all's action this evening. So continuing on the process under track B where an applicant is asked for a decision on a permit, following that initial denial by the zoning administrator due to the conflict with the official map, the Board of Appeals considers whether, in the absence of an official map, a hardship is created by denial of the application and approval of a permit would be justified. Action by the Board of Appeals triggers the six-month window in which the road authority must initiate proceedings to acquire interest in the land. At the end of the six-month window, if acquisition proceedings have not commenced, the zoning administrator or building official can proceed to issue the permit if it meets all other local regulatory requirements. Now let's look specifically at official map number 21. This slide shows a graphic representation of the interchange concept for the CASA-3 intersection over an aerial map. This next slide shows a graphic representation of the official map boundaries for the CASA-3 intersection over the same aerial map with the proposed future right-of-way needed for the project highlighted in the yellow crosshatching. This slide shows what the official map actually looks like, and as you can see, the graphic representations are much more informative, and you get a much better idea of the properties that are included in that map area and what's going to be impacted. So we find those graphics very helpful in explaining to property owners and to you, the board, as to what's all included in this. This next slide shows a graphic representation of the interchange concept for the CASA-5 intersection over an aerial map, which will include realignment of about one mile of the Trunk Highway 14 to the south of the existing highway. And you can see it, how it runs parallel to the current highway, and it's got a little bit of shading where those curves are. This next slide shows a graphic representation of the land area proposed to be included for the official map boundaries for Trunk Highway 14 and the CASA-5 intersection over the same aerial map, but it's zoomed out to get a better idea of the boundary limits of that area. And here's the official map, what it looks like on the official map, which you can see a big difference. And looking at these on the individual map pages, it's really hard to understand the width of the area that's being discussed. Next, we'll discuss the adoption process for official map number 21. Landowners whose properties lie within the proposed mapped area and other property owners within 500 feet of the proposed official map boundaries received notice of this evening's public hearing the first week of April. Approximately 135 notices were mailed out, and a legal notice was published in the Post Bulletin on Saturday, April 1st. The county board is required to hold a public hearing regarding the adoption of official map number 21 and receive public comments from members of the public. The board is being asked to act on two matters tonight relative to the official map number 21. First, the board shall act to adopt the official map by ordinance. For your reference, this ordinance is on page 58 of your packet. Following that action, the board shall act by resolution, included on page 60, approving the memorandum of understanding and authorizing the board chair and the deputy clerk of the board to sign the MOU. And finally, the adopted ordinance will be published in the newspaper, and the official map will be recorded against the affected properties in the Property Records and Licensing Division or Department. I would note that the Planning Office received several phone calls and a couple of written comments as a result of the property owners receiving the mailed notices. At least one of them is attending virtually this evening and has asked to provide comments via Teams when the public hearing is opened. The admin ladies have been made aware of this request and are on the lookout for him on Teams this evening. We've covered a lot of information, and I would ask if any of y'all have any questions, please feel free to ask myself. Ms. Meniac, I believe Mr. Ryder is online to answer any questions about official map 21 or the process, and I would ask you to do these questions before you open the public hearing. And it looks like we may have some folks here this evening that may want to provide comments or have questions as well.
Is there any questions? Yes.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Griffin, would you look at, can you go back to a slide that's on my page, slide 48, which is the CASA-5 interchange concept?
Okay. I can do one at times. This one here?
That's the one.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm trying to understand, to the grayed-out area, to the west of that county road, the interchange, there's a grayed-out area, and then on the subsequent map, that area, that road does not appear?
Are you talking, the gray, I don't know, I think it's got a pointer here, but the gray area to the left?
So, to the left of CASA-5?
Yes, ma'am.
There is a, it looks like there's a county road, and then there's a grayed-out area around that county road? And then on the subsequent map, that road to the west didn't appear on the map? I'm trying to understand what's happening there.
Okay, let me, it's not working. Go back. There we go.
You've got one more.
Hang on.
Now that road to the west of CASA, oh, that's through now.
I'm going the wrong way. Hang on, I'm sorry, ma'am.
That's okay.
Trying to go forward. See, I knew I would mess this up. Oh, you're going way too fast. Think Clara's driving. Are you driving? Okay. Can you back?
There's five, okay.
So there's five with the gray area on the left.
Now there's the map. Now you see that gray area's gone.
And I'm going to refer to Ms. Meniac on this question. She's more knowledgeable about that than I do.
Good evening, Commissioners. Kay Meniac, Division Administrator for Fiscal Development. So on the first map you're referring to, Commissioner, that is an anticipated future development kind of a road, but not necessarily dictated, you know, depending on how the development would occur and what the developer might want to see. This is a vision that we went through as a concept layout, but when we go to the official map, we didn't want to necessarily dictate exactly where that footprint lied. So that's why you see it missing from that.
So then help me understand, we've got the interchange, you had a concept map of a potential future road for anticipating development to the west.
Correct.
Okay, south of county, of 14 on CASA-5, to the east, you are showing?
We are.
An access road.
Correct, because in that particular case, we're taking away the current access where our old 34 comes in, so that will be gone, so that needed to connect. So that's why we showed that one come back up into that concept of that interchange.
So that would be mapped now, and when this project would go forward, that road would be, that access road would be part of the construction?
Correct, and I believe the City of Byron is interested in constructing that sooner rather than later, and have plans to do that somewhere in their current CIP within the first couple of years, because it does provide the access and the connection, and they could move forward with anything on either side of that service road.
And then the City of Byron would have interest in whether or not there is an access road to the west that connects?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, that helps. And then?
Mr. Chair, just before she goes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On this slide, you know, the implementation is 20 or 30 years, but the effect of the vote tonight is immediate, at least on the property owners. To that point, then, can we, maybe a couple of questions. Can we assume that the existing highway through Byron, so to speak, will be gone, and that will revert to land that can be developed?
Correct. At a future date, whenever the project comes along, whether it's two years, whether it's 20 years from now, that old right-of-way where Trunk Highway 14 currently sits would be, you know, the roadway would be taken out, and so that property, depending on how MINDOT owns that, whether it's a fee title or an easement, it typically goes back to an underlying fee owner. It can be, you know, sold, whatever. MINDOT would make that decision. But yes, so then that becomes area that's available for development.
And that may be more specifically on this, under this plan, then, do they, I think it's Strain Body Shops and Tronson's Tank, and there's a couple of businesses, are they left on an island with no access, or do they have an access, you know, ingress/egress road?
Correct. They will stay exactly how they are today. The official map will not impact their access, or we're not acquiring any property rights at this point in time. At the future time, when the interchange goes in and we start that process, we would acquire, you know, the official map pieces that we need, and then the remaining parcels would likely access off of what currently is the north frontage road, because now, remember, all of a sudden you've got all that space in between where the old highway used to be, and that's how you would access that, instead of like, you know, coming out to our road now, you would just, everything would go north to that frontage road. So you would still maintain access. It's going to look a lot different.
Sure, just to clarify, so 20 or 30 years from now, when this all plays out, so to speak, and if those businesses or those buildings are certainly still there, they could effectively operate with the new interchange. Is that correct?
Well, you can see the yellow.
Or they're going to be gone.
Right, Commissioner, so some of them right there really close in that yellow footprint would have to be acquired, because, you know, the new roadway, the new ramps, the new slopes, whether it's a back slope or inside, would acquire those parcels like shown in the yellow.
I didn't think.
And then any remaining, like just to the west there, would still be able to, you know, have a functioning piece of property with just a different access.
Leave it for there now, maybe I'll have more. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Another question, Mr. Chair.
Another question, go ahead.
Mr. Griffin, I just want to make sure I completely understand, that Kalmar Township and Byron have signed off on this official map?
Yes, ma'am.
They have been part of developing it, and they've conferred. I know that we've had public meetings around design, and I assume then also MINDOT has viewed this map and it's congruent and consistent with their plans. So the question really is, does Olmsted County agree with the plan and design that the other governmental units have agreed to?
We've been party to it all along.
Absolutely. We were actually the lead agency for the corridor analysis work that arrived at the vision. Olmsted County led that with our partners of MINDOT, the City of Byron, Dodge County, Cassin, MINDOT, all of us were at the table.
And those governmental units have had no objection to this plan?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just follow up?
Yes.
With that so-called approval, I don't know if it's by resolution or not, have they then given up what we call municipal consent for the development of the interchange 20 years from now?
So Commissioner Senjim, so our memorandum of understanding is with all four of those agencies, because all four of them have some purview and part of the development process. So as things come along, along this corridor, and like where these potential interchanges would be, we'll all play a role in the review of that development, so that everybody is party to that same agreement, and we're all kind of tracking along the same, and it's all a cooperative effort.
So I think whenever, Mr. Chair, whenever this plays out, the municipal consent law will still have to apply and?
They'll still be correct, because like the City of Byron has their development process and everything, and if it comes along and it's within the city limits of Byron, you'll follow that process. Yep.
All right.
Mr. Chair, one more question. So we have, we're doing an official map which identifies landmass that can be applied, but this is not the final design. This is a conceptual model. It is not the final design. So when the day comes, when it appears that there would be money to proceed, the final design would be done. There would be another process of involving Kalmar, Byron, MINDOT. There'll be more public hearings about actual design. So right now, what we're saying is sort of a notice to the public, is that in the long range, you can expect Highway 14 to be redesigned with these interchanges, and so incorporate that into your own planning for your own properties. That's basically what it says. Okay, thank you.
So, excuse me, if I'm one of the property owners that's in that yellow, one of the business owners there, and I know that 10 or 15 or 20 years from now, there's going to be an interchange coming through that's going to acquire, that they acquire my property, can I still make improvements to my property and operate my business as I see fit and get true value at the time of the acquisition, or am I, or they can hold that against me and say, why it's blacked out, you're parking lot?
No, absolutely, Commissioner. So, you know, if a building needs a new roof, if you need to put new windows in, you go ahead and do that. I mean, we're not restricting anything like that. It's really intended for, you know, to the benefit of a property owner that wants to develop. They kind of know the footprint, what they could put there, what they maybe want to, where the access could maybe come from, routine maintenance and everything of any structure within that mapping is not restricted by any stretch. You should maintain your properties. The other thing it does is if a developer wants to put something in there, knows where this footprint is, works with us then, and it's like, well, we certainly don't want, not we, you know, like City of Byron or whoever, you don't want to put a 10-story apartment building sitting right where 20 years from now you might have to knock it down, because that's the footprint of the interchange. So it's really intended to provide that planning tool for everybody on what the future is envisioned to be at that intersection.
So, if I'm that, which is all great, you know, if I'm that property owner, and this is discouraging me from using my property as I see fit down the road, can I force a sale of my property right now? Can I say, "MINDOT buy me now"?
You could certainly put in a request to the agency, and then it would be up to the agency whether that decision is made. We have had that occur occasionally on some of our official maps where, all I can think of one in particular to the north of our 44 up there, where there was, the resident had passed away, and the family wasn't sure what to do with the property then, and it sat right in the middle of the official map. So they put in a hardship request to us, and ultimately we purchased it, and now that's where our new roundabout is getting built, because we knew we would need that.
Okay, thank you.
And this process has been going on for, what, 15 years, right? We've been in negotiations at the table with Byron, Cassin, Kalmar.
For this particular project, Commissioner? This has been going on a long time. Like Ben alluded to, our corridor analysis where we ultimately finally came to the vision here this time, this is the third time that we tried it. You know, we just, we were never reaching agreement between the agencies. We were never coming up with the right picture or the right vision. And then this time around, following all of our traffic modeling and our growth expectations and all that kind of stuff, all three agencies agreed to this vision.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, and maybe Commissioner Senjim as well, I know that one of the controversial things is, to Commissioner Tine's question, if I made improvements to my property at the point that the property needs to be acquired, do I get a fair market value for that property? And I'm looking at Ms. Meniac, because I know that from the county perspective, we are in a position of negotiating beyond what we think we should have to pay for certain properties. And that was legislatively done during, about 20 years ago. And so I think that the, to the chagrin of local governments, the legislature has dictated that the property owner needs to be kept whole, and in many cases has benefited. So, and that drives up the cost of the project to the public, but it's to protect the rights of the property owner, so.
All right, thank you. Stand by, we may have other things.
Just one more thing, Mr. Chair, if I may. And I thought about it when Commissioner Cascaden asked one of her questions early on. Just so y'all know, Dodge County has adopted their official map. So I think that question came up when we had an open house at the end of March at the City of Byron. The questions came up, and we were not aware of that, and looked into it and found that they had, that Dodge County has adopted their official map, so their portion of the corridor is now under an official map.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, at this time, then, we will open up the hearing for comment. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this adoption of Trunk Highway 14 official map 21?
Will be up here?
Yep. Yes. Can you give us your name and your address, please?
Bob Hanson, 6698 Buckridge Court, Northeast, Oxford, Minnesota. And if you were wondering who owns the larger section of land up there, that would be me. So, my concerns are, well, concerns are that the land is going to be lost, and I don't understand why they would want to eliminate real estate property, which is sizable, $50,000, $60,000 a year. Plus, I had plans to add on another 20-some thousand square foot building for Byron Gymnastics and a couple gyms for them, for the school district. That's what they requested me to do, and I was going to do that for them. It seems odd that they can't move that 300 or 400 yards to the south and purchase farmland, which is going to be considerably cheaper than approximately 20,000 square feet of building plus a school, that's another 20,000 square feet. building plus a school, that's another 20,000 square feet. I mean, I'm in business and if, I wouldn't do that. I'd find something else that's cheaper. And I started looking for land and there's not a lot of cheap land out there for commercial use, whether you're in Rochester or even Byron right now. So, you'd lose, you'd lose that real estate money by, you know, removing those. I can't build, I can't help them out. If I do build, I have to buy some land somewhere else, which I already have the land, I have a couple acres land that I can build on. So, it perplexes me why they would not, you know, move the highway 300 yards to the south, leave the rental property, leave that property there. It seems like it would be an easy enough thing to do. So, I guess that's my main concern.
Thank you.
And I don't know if you can see it up there, but you can see the black design, but there are three buildings in there plus two acres, so approximately four acres of ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against? Is there anybody online?
Chair, right, I would just like to ask if Wayne Lang is online. He originally had signed up to speak, but we have not seen him as of yet. Is Wayne Lang or his spouse available and wishing to speak?
Mr. Lang, are you available? Okay.
And nobody else has stated they'd like to speak.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against? I think I did ask three times. Anybody else that wishes to speak for or against? All right.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, I have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries, public hearing is closed. All right, so now it's up to the pleasure of the commissioner. What do you wish to do?
I mean, I could understand the concerns and if I was you out there, I'd feel the same way, but I think the train has left the station now and we've got, three of the four parties have already agreed to this map and in my mind, if we were not to agree with it, we're back to our fourth attempt of a map. I don't personally understand why the interchange is as far north as it is, but it's beyond me, so I'm going to make a motion to approve the land, the official map boundaries.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion, a second to adopt, adoption of trunk highway 14 official map number 21. Is there any other discussion?
Ms. Chair, could I just?
Yes, go ahead.
Ask a question maybe of Ms. Binian once more. I've got this screen up where I can see the properties now, but I'd forgotten about the Zumbrow Education District. Apparently that building would be taken out, is that right?
If it falls within the official map area and as we, you know, 20 years from now as we design an interchange, if that needs to be acquired, yes. It would, I would say, I don't know exactly the outline of their property, but it sits in that corner, I know.
Just to clarify, did you, so the highway, the old, the existing highway will come out, that land will revert to whatever it's zoned for.
Correct.
I suspect. And, but this, the Strain property and the Tronsen property and I forget who else is there, but those properties, if they're still there when this project comes about, they can continue to exist in whatever form that business might be, is that right?
Perhaps.
Those buildings, they're there, they're not going to, we're not going to take those buildings, are we?
Sure.
Yes.
Predictably, or would we?
Yes. Because if they're sitting in that shaded area, that's the official map, so then those parcels within there would need acquisition, full acquisition. Because like a ramp, you know, like the ramp that's showing up there goes through those structures.
So, Ms. Chair, so effectively with the passage of this motion, we have devalued those properties, I think considerably.
Mr. Chair, Senator Sanjum, that wasn't my experience with the development along Highway 63 South between 40th and 48th. Actually, it started earlier, it started about 25th. So there used to be a big truck stop down there, there was a whole lot of things down in that area and it was a really contentious time when we were looking to improve Highway 63 and put those interchanges in. And actually, most of the business owners ended up better off. They got really good settlements. It was actually motivated, I was in the legislature at the time, it motivated me to change the state law so that private property owners were protected and some of them rebuilt on site. Some of them rebuilt there, but it also opened that whole area up for development. You can argue whether that's good or bad. I think we'll see the same thing with Byron, this whole area will become commercially developable for the city of Byron. And I understand why, if I was my business, I'd say, why don't you go further? But Byron is going to have really nice access for development that absolutely adjoins the city. So, yes, but this may be 20, 30 years away. So, I'm sorry, sir, it's not public hearing time, I probably shouldn't be speaking to you directly, but it is, it is, it's often difficult when we're trying to say, how do we have a highway that other units of government can agree is the right alignment, when it does impact on some property owners. But the law, the state law anyway, the way it was changed really financially keeps those property owners whole. It doesn't necessarily mean they don't go through an awful lot to try and re, you know, find a new site, rebuild, start over. It's not simple. I'm not saying that, but it's a trade-off really in some ways.
Ms. Chair, can I just clarify once more with Ms. Binian? Ms. Binian, when I look at that map, and I'm looking, I think, at the Strain building and maybe the Tronsen tank, and if you take that white line out, that white line will go where the highway goes, I suspect, when the existing highway goes. And so to me, everything north of that red line would continue to exist as I read that map.
Yes.
And that would include the businesses I'm talking about, or some of them.
Or thinking that little, that little rectangle-y square there, is that the businesses? Yeah. So yes, those would stay and then access would change because of the 14 being gone.
Yep, yep.
I don't know all the businesses out there, I apologize.
Okay, sure. Okay. Ms. Chair, I think that answers my question.
All right, Commissioner Tine.
Well, one point, I think we're having the same issue and I'm sure you realize that on the east side is, is that the highway goes south, starts to bend south, we're going to lose a lot of commercial properties there too, that right now border the south side of 14. You can see that takes out half of their properties. So we're having the same issue there, but I don't know what the fix is. If we move intersection south, then we would lose even more. My question is, is, say I'm just outside this red line, now my property is only, say, partially taken or something like that, but now my access and my visibility to my site is not what it was before, can I force Mindot to buy my whole property?
Potentially, potentially. Some negotiations are such that the property owner, exactly, okay, I'm impacted enough, I request a total take. In other cases, Mindot would work with that owner to, you know, make sure an access was acceptable, trying to make that property whole. It just really kind of depends on the negotiations for each individual property.
So I'm sure it's not easy.
No.
Yeah. And the questions, yeah, the questions that the commissioners are bringing up is why it's taken 15 years to this point.
To Mr. Tine's point.
One second, just one second. And I know that in Byron, they have, with the city council, gone back and forth over this many, many times. So it was, it was amazing that we got it to this point after 15 years. Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, just to Commissioner Tine's point, I know that on Highway 14 going to Otana, there were maybe a couple farms there that probably got bought out 10 years ahead of the project on a hardship basis, so it can't happen.
I expect it will.
All right, are there any other questions? All right, we have a motion and a second before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries, so we have adopted the official map number 21.
Thank you. You don't get the MOU.
Oh, is that, should the motion have included the MOU?
You can have a separate motion.
All right, so we need a motion, that's not on my agenda, but the motion, help me with the wording, a motion.
Chair, I'll move the memorandum out of standing.
Second.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Appreciate the help from the commissioners. All right, so all in favor of adopting the MOU, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, say no. MOU is adopted, thank you for the reminder.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So, we're at level B, the environmental commission transition. All right, so, no, I'm sorry, we have a pro- proclaim May 7th.
Consent agenda, Mr. Chair.
Letter A.
Consent agenda.
Can we do that? Long story. Thank you very much. The consent agenda is next, so on the consent agenda is, first of all, letter A, approve the April 4th, 2023 Homestead County Board Minutes. Letter B, DNR Conservation Partners Legacy Grant for Chester Woods Park. Letter C, Chester Woods Park Amphitheater Contract. And letter D, proposed changes to the 2008 Solid Waste Hallar Insurance Resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All second.
All right, I have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The consent agenda is adopted. All right, number five, decision and discussion. So letter A, proclaim May 7th through 13th as correctional officers week. Sheriff, do you have a comment there?
I'm going to bring them all up, I think.
And you have the people, yes.
I was worried early on that all you folks thought we were standing here because of, you know, our other issues, but, no, it's Correctional Officers Week coming up on May 7th. And the week after that is Law Enforcement or Police Week, they say, so we've got pretty much half of Luke's shift here that's been hanging around and listening and that, so I think was just really to come up here, thank you for doing the proclamation, we appreciate that. There'll be some information in the lobby, whether it's out in the Loja or by the information desk or something, so please take time during that week to stop by and see, you'll see our folks in action, all the things they do. We treat them to a nice lunch at least one of the days and a few other things during that week, so just wanted to give you an opportunity to thank some of our folks here. And as you can see, it takes all sizes. Yep. And they're all great people too, we really appreciate them and all that they do. A lot of what their correctional staff, detention staff does is behind the scenes, you know, they're the people behind the curtain, basically. And they're handling the most difficult people in it, generally the most difficult people in our communities. So, you know, they certainly do deserve a week of their own to garner that appreciation, so I don't know if any of you have something to say, but you're certainly.
Well, first of all, I think that part of it, as you said it already, but let's emphasize it, it's behind the scenes. Almost everything that the county does is behind the scenes and a lot of people don't know all the things that we do for the county, but you provide a great service for the county. And you know that the people in the county are always concerned about public safety, safety for themselves, safety for their neighborhoods, and they're also concerned about justice and fairness and you have a part in all of those things, which is really, really important. And so, as Chair, I appreciate that and I'm sure some, maybe some of the other commissioners want to add to that as well. Thank you so much, Sheriff, and to your staff.
Mr. Chair, members, this morning the admin committee had the pleasure of seeing some, but not all of you, the admin committee, and they were able to tell us some of the specific stories about their duties and what it's like. And I think, I hadn't thought very much about the role that you play in really getting to know the people who are detained and helping them refocus, because you're considered correctional officers, you know, helping them refocus their lives, holding them accountable for what they've done, but treating them as people who have an opportunity to restore their role in our society. And you help move them in that direction and you're not very visible, yet you're dealing with people who are often in, as someone described it this morning, the worst day of their life and the worst day in their family's lives. So I've been involved, as some of you know, with the Children and Incarcerated Parents Effort and the work that you're doing with incarcerated parents, because they're still parents, 65% of the people that were detained are parents of children under 18. And so you're doing prevention as well as accountability and restoration. So, thank you for the invisible work you do that still makes a difference in a lot of people's lives.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Sheriff Torgerson, I remember the first conversation I had with you and you were telling me about the sheriff's department and you described your department as proactive, responsive, and humane. And I have found that to be true continuously and it gives me a very reassured feeling just to know how very nearby you are from where I work and it just, it gives me constant opportunity to admire you and your whole team. And I'm thinking back to the tour and kind of observational opportunity that some of the newly elected board members had to observe the adult detention center. And I was so struck by how warm and humane the deputies' interactions were with the detainees and it really, I was very impressed and moved by that. So, just thank you all.
I'll just add that I'm happy I haven't had the opportunity to get to know you guys as well. But I do, but I do know, I mean, I've had people that I do know that have interacted with you guys in the detention center and I haven't heard any bad reports, so I really appreciate that. Congratulations on your recognition, it's well deserved. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Very nice. All right, letter B, the environmental commission transition. So we've had the public comment and of course, we've had discussions with the previous board as well as this board and that's how we are here today. So, Mr. Geeson, you have some information for us and as well as Mr. Hill, right?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, I'm Pete Geeson, Deputy Administrator with our Physical Development Division and with me is Tony Hill, the Director of Environmental Resources. So Tony and I are going to share a few slides, just both with the context of some history around the environmental commission with the recommendation to move to a model of both engagement and learning and focus to more around work groups. We hope to, after hearing the public comment, really what I also, we want to share also that it's not about the what, we hope that both the past board and this board's emphasis on environmental issues continues to be very, very strong, it's more about the how. So that's what we like to frame our presentation on. So the environmental commission was formed, I think we actually nailed it down in 1991, we're quite sure, right around 1990, 1991, where it took on duties of the former Board of Health and particularly the environmental related duties that, and it was a decision-making body that reviewed preliminary plats for water wells and septic systems to assure that there's actual adequate soils on those properties to do so. They also took on the role of reviewing variance requests for certain ordinances and you may remember where a license was suspended of a hotel environmental commission, if there's an appeal to that, the environmental commission played a role in that. So they started out as a decision-making body, they were made up of members that it was designated in the bylaws to. They were made up of members that it was designated in the bylaws to include very specific membership, a member from the city of Rochester, I think Commissioner Senjam was part of the original group, township officers and so on. So it was set up to continue the work of that, what the previous Boards of Health did. They were also, in addition to decision-making, they were very active in various policy roles for those county departments that had a role to play with any type of environmental, whether indoor or outdoor environmental type of issue. You may remember early tobacco ordinance work, both Public Health Services Advisory Board and Environmental Commission played a role in that. They also did deep dives into budgets, into work plans in those early years of each of the departments, and also established what's called the Environmental Management Team, which is made up of the department directors from each of those departments. Over the last ten years or so, and this really evolved, it's not specifically step by step, but it kind of based on staffing transitions and different changes that happening. It really moved over time to more of an advisory role to the county board versus those decision-making roles. More recently, there was the plat review, actually was formally changed from the Environmental Commission reviewing those to the Planning Advisory Commission and the staff of the Planning Department. The variance requests are now, and we have to do a little bit more work on some ordinances, but in general, advisory boards as a whole typically don't hear variance requests like they used to. Those are moved to an administrative hearing officer as a key step as part of that process. And then the work plans and budget reviews phased out over time as well, so they don't, and I think this is true for all of our advisory boards, they aren't doing a deeper dive necessarily around department operations. Good news is, the Environmental Management Team, we still meet. We've been meeting for thirty years every month, mainly to make sure staff are coordinated around all the various environmental work that we do. Back, another part of the history, if you remain, for those three commissioners who were here back in two thousand and eighteen, the board asked us to assess all the roles of all of our advisory boards and commissions. Both, there were some questions from certain commissioners, and there was also questions from some of the members of some of our commissions. And they're very, they were various concerns, but some of it was lacking purpose or clarity. Part of the specific questions around the Environmental Commission, where the topic of environment is so broad, some members may be more interested in water, some in climate, some in energy, some in soil health. It's hard to get one cohesive set of members around one particular topic. The results of that came to, the commissioners recognized the value of advisory boards and really asked the staff to put together work plans for each of the advisory boards and commissions, and recognizing it's one of other community engagement strategies. So it's a key part, but not the only part of community engagement. With the Environmental Commission, there are really two good recent successes with the Environmental Commission, one around nitrates, that ended up taking quite a long time, because partly the members changed and we had to reorient members to the issue. But it ended up translating to the Soil Health Initiative that the board approved last year. The other one Tony can expand on is the Recycling Task Force. If I may, I'll hand it over to you to highlight that group.
Thanks, Pete. Tony Hill, Director of Environmental Resources. So the Recycling Task Force was a subcommittee of the Environmental Commission. And what we wanted to focus on was how do we recycle better within the community? And what we determined, we brought along a broad group of people from the haulers to residents, to small business owners, to large business owners. They come, you know, to find out what and how we can recycle and the education behind it. So it was a success in helping us determine, you know, with our recycling cart guide, working with the haulers and also the business community and the residents on what they needed for recycling. So like the slide shows, over the three, six months with the community's help, you know, we were able to do that. And one of the things that the haulers wanted was to find individuals. And so we determined that that wasn't the best route to go with the Recycling Task Force. But it really helped, you know, consolidate a group around education, so.
Next slide shows the members.
Yes. So, let's see. Oh, I got, yeah, Ben Griffith, I got his back and forth issue, sorry. So the Recycling Task Force, like I said, included haulers as well as residents from the townships in the city of Rochester. We had small businesses participate, we had large businesses, we had institutions, we had nonprofits, as well as the city of Rochester staff also participated in the Recycling Task Force. So like I said, it brought together a broad group to help solve some of recycling issues. Thanks, Pete.
So I think with that experience of, and the value of the work groups that are around nitrates and recycling, that's kind of stemmed the discussion about other, can we use that model for other types of issues? And really, the next few slides are on some broad topics, but if we become more focused, it may provide more quicker feedback, more inclusive feedback, but also more timely feedback around the services and the work we do as a county. So continuing with solid waste, Tony's solid waste management plan for a tenure, it could be more focused on a number of solid waste issues, from food waste, yard waste, energy production, our waste energy plant and energy park that we have here just east of downtown. You heard the climate, our Climate Action Plan last week, at your last meeting, and gave us direction to continue that work. That, there are subsets to that relative to building efficiencies, fleet management, and other parts of our environment. So that's, again, potential future topics. Soil and groundwater health, I mentioned the three million dollars that you allocated from the federal dollars last year for the Soil Health Initiative. There could be more focused work around, some potential work around Cascade Creek watershed. There's some initiative with Dodge County and the city of Rochester there. Or thinking more about open space in general and the opportunities for trails. So with that, we really, we see this as opportunities to kind of further strengthen the board's direction around environmental work. You'll hear the next agenda item, Wilfredo, and I will be presenting a proposal to tap into some outside expertise for the Inflation Reduction Act, which is those federal dollars that may be available to us for projects. And also just, again, provide more refined scope and work. And tap into what the public health is using as a community council, which is a very specific group that we can tap into to really look through the environmental work through an equity lens. So with that, we're recommending we move to that. We've sunset the Environmental Commission formally, but launch into a work group model that would be more focused. And for sure, want to celebrate the work of the Environmental Commission.
All right, thank you. Does anybody, Commissioners, have any questions for Mr. Hill or Mr. Geeson?
I do, Mr. Chair. I'm sure you're shocked. Mr. Geeson knows what I'm going to say. Where's the plan? You've got, we could do this, we could do that. We've got all these issues, we've got this climate initiative going that's really broad and spectrum. It's potential. We've got our solid waste management issue. We've been talking about fleet management, we've been talking about, but where's the real plan for using? You did a great job with the Recycling Task Force. You did a great job of bringing cross-sector stakeholders together, informing them, conferring with them, identifying solutions, and you came out with a better, with a better plan than what you originally started with. You listened, you conferred, and you came out with something that you originally started with. We did something similar with the nitrate. We had the whole work of the Environmental Commission, then it went to soil and water conservation staff. They came back, they conferred, we came out with something better. So we know that with this cross-sector work, it's important, you know, there's value not to just rely on a small group of people. So I understand why you're saying the Environmental Commission doesn't really work because you get a group of ten or twelve people, they have this range of experience, and we're wanting to deal with all these various issues. But the symbolism for the community of eliminating the Environmental Commission, when we don't have a really solid plan to put forward of how we're going to engage citizens on what issues. You're asking what your, you know, people were saying, you know, they talked about the symbolism this evening. I'm not surprised. But what's the framework? And what are the, who sets the priorities and what are our upcoming priorities? We haven't, we haven't outlined a plan yet. And so while I personally can accept that, yep, the Environmental Commission as constituted didn't work, and a commission structure is not as flexible as you would, you think we need, given the broad public concern about environmental issues, given the new funding that's coming from the federal government and from the state government, a commission, everything going through a commission that meets once a month is just slow. So having task forces, having work groups can be more responsive, can deal with the rapidity of the timing of change, can allow you or us to be the kind of leaders and innovators that I think was referenced by some of the people in the, that testified tonight. We're known to be innovators, we're known to be leaders. So how are we going to have that flexibility to do that? What's our plan? So while I can sit here as a board member, knowing I will be hearing regularly, the general public, citizens who are concerned about this issue don't have a way to regularly hear. And so they like the Environmental Commission option, because it's once a month, they know they can hear what's going on. So where's the plan for community engagement? Where's the plan for what our priorities are, what we're taking next? We've outlined a whole bunch of stuff we can do. What are we going to do? And how are we going to involve citizens and expertise in that process? So I feel like I'm, I think I'm kind of alone on the board on this right now, because we trust you, we believe you. Many people have been on the commission and said it wasn't working. I've not been on that commission. I trust my colleagues, but I don't really feel like we have a solid plan that we're putting forward today. And so for that reason, I'm reluctant to move forward today.
Mr., oh, pardon me, sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chair, Commissioner Cascaden, you're not alone in your concerns. I was looking for many reassurances tonight. To particularly answer the question, is this a proposal that matches the urgency and seriousness of the climate change crisis and the environmental challenges that we face as a county? And one concern that remains for me is the timeline. Considering the urgency and the immediacy of our climate crisis, learning that work groups could be formed toward late summer, just sounds, it sounds and feels too far away. I'm not comfortable with that timeline. So my questions are, why now? Why transition the Environmental Commission now as opposed to ten years from now or twenty years ago? And can the timeline for the transition reflect the urgency of the climate change crisis?
Commissioner.
I think this, oh, you go to Rossman.
Oh, go ahead, you go to Commissioner.
Well, are we going to let him address the question?
I don't think it's fair. We should be to blame for not having this discussion seven years ago, five years ago, when this has been brought forward to, we are the impotent to making change, because we are so afraid of changing the way we do things. We've, those of us who have been on the Environmental Commission have recognized that it doesn't work, and we've been trying to get change. And now to point at staff and say, no, that's not fair. We, we are the problem. And if we're afraid to make change because the name doesn't sound right, that we're dropping Environmental Commission, that's on us. I'm not afraid to take, to take blame for not appearing to do things. I'm not afraid of that. I'll be happy to take that. What I don't want to do is to not do things. And that's what we've been doing for seven years now, since I've been on the board, is not doing things. And an example of that is nitrates. When we first started nitrates, was six or seven years ago, and I bet we spent two years trying to teach the Environmental Commission what a nitrate is, how it's applied, what it well is, how aquifers work. Well, that's a complete waste of time. And by the time we get that group educated, half of them are off their commission. And we've accomplished nothing other than wasting staff time. We may change when we took that away from the Environmental Commission, put it in the hands of our Soil Water Conservation District personnel who understood the issue, and they reached out to people who understood the issue, and we came up with a plan that is being taught statewide, nationwide. We made a big change by taking it away from the state structure that we're also comfortable with. And if we're going to sit here and pretend like everything's great, let's not make a change. Then we are complicit in the problem.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Thank you to all of you for coming here tonight and expressing what clearly is a passion for the environment and an understanding that matches, I would, I'll speak for myself, but I think all of us on the board understand to Mark's comments, that we absolutely need to have a very clear vision. We need to get more strategic about the environment. And if you can walk away with one thing tonight, your comments, again, absolutely match our passion and changing the Environmental Commission to a model that will actually be impactful and come forth with action. One of you said it in your comments, you followed all of those agendas, and you can recall two action items that came out of that commission over several years. You can't be okay with that kind of results as citizens, and we're not either. I come to this as a farmer, as someone who's worked in production agriculture, both as a farmer on our farm and then professionally. And I am absolutely committed to ensuring that I bring that expertise. I have worked in the scientific field, in food safety and environmental sustainability. I've seen technical working groups work very, very successfully. We are working with very technical areas that are so broad in spectrum that a group of ten people will never, ever have the expertise to bring the right projects, decisions, guidance to us forth. We must bring the right experts to the table and be, again, to this urgency that you spoke to tonight. We've got to be taking action faster. For all of those reasons, I believe that there's a better model and am committed to working with staff to put that in place. You're absolutely right, there are hundreds of millions of dollars that we're going to have access to, and we need to understand how to do that. I hope you're here and stay for the rest of the meeting. You're going to understand how we started a process to get outside expertise to help us to understand how to access those dollars, and we are absolutely committed to doing that. So again, thank you for being here, and let's work together to build a better model.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I might respond to Commissioner Tyne. I have not followed closely the Environmental Commission, have never served on it. I'm not objecting to eliminating the Environmental Commission. What I'm saying is, I agree with Commissioner Rossman, we need something more flexible. But what is our plan? So I'm not seeing that we have a solid proposal before us of how we move forward. We have a loose commitment to using a task force model. But we haven't said who's on first, what's on second, what are we going to be doing? And so, well, I'm of two minds. I mean, I could say, what I'd like to do is move to table this and ask the staff to come back with a plan for the next six months. Because then we would have something solid, let's say, what are we going to be working on environmentally with that technical expertise we need, with the community input we need? Because it just feels like it's not enough to say, this didn't work, we've got to do something else. And what we're saying, this didn't work, we've got to do something else. That Recycling Task Force really worked well. We got it done in three months, we came up with something we hadn't thought about. That's what we need. But right now, what's before us is just, it's eliminate the Environmental Commission, and it's not going to be understood by the general public. It's going to be seen as not having a commitment to the environmental issues when we, in fact, we really do.
I don't doubt any Commissioner's commitment to the environment. I think we're seven, seven oh in favor of doing more and continuing to put investments into making a change for the better. So I don't doubt that at all. My point is, is I don't think it's fair for staff to come up with a plan when we can't even say, okay, it's time to move forward, because that's what today is, is the time for us to say. the time for us to say, it's time to move forward, this isn't working. We can't.
Commissioner, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just say that if we don't have an Environmental Commission, then we, seven of us, become the Environmental Commission. Are, and are we willing to do that? Do we have the time? Do we, do we, do we have the interest, quite frankly, to do that? And I don't think over time we do. I think, and it's hard for me to imagine an Environmental Commission nowadays that, that isn't amped up and and working hard and being innovative and thoughtful and bringing forth recommendations, because, you know, I, I was 20 years in the legislature, and the environmental movement is as absolutely strong as it's ever been across this state, frankly, across this world. I've had the opportunity to travel to Germany a good number of times. I will tell you, the whole German political spectrum changed last election because of young people and their concern about the environment, and we heard that tonight. I was thinking about what they call Fridays, Fridays for the Future in Germany, and where young people come down to City Hall every Friday and proclaim their interest in in the future of the earth, and, and that's a good thing. So how do we, how do we make that work in in Homestead County, Minnesota? And I don't think, frankly, to internalize it, to make us the Environmental Commission is the way to do that. I, I think if you're gonna truly effective have a, you know, have an environmental initiative in this county, you have to externalize it, you have to bring as many people to the table on this as possible. And we've got experts in this city, that, in this county, that, and we all know this, that, while they might have one profession, they're absolutely experts in other professions. I don't think there's a problem at all to find experts in this county and people interested nowadays to work on the environment. And so as I think about this, and I think about, how, how do you approach this? You know, to internalize, all of a sudden, you're not holistic, you're not participatory, you're not inclusionary, you're, you're, you, you put the environment and that initiative right on the table of the county board, and, and we are then asked to bring forth ideas on task, task courses, you know, month in, month out, year in, year out, and, and you're gonna tell us, we just can't staff it and all that, and so, and so, so we lose all that, we lose out all that initiative, all that thoughtful expertise that we have out in the community. And, and that, that's just painful for me to think about this, because, again, this is, this is not only an important issue right now, the whole idea of, of climate change, the environmental sustainability, how do we preserve this earth so that it's here for people 10,000 years from now? We're using up our resources, we're using up our fossil fuels, we're, you know, the soil, et cetera, et cetera. We're gonna have great big debates, even in this county, I suspect, about solar versus cork, and, and how do we deal with that? Are we gonna deal with it here? Are we gonna have a commission that studies it? Are we gonna have a task force that studies it, that comes out of the county board? I mean, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's there, it's in every county in Minnesota, because in order to reach these climate goals and these, frankly, new laws that just came out of this legislature, 100% by 2040, is going to take a lot more wind and solar across the, the Great Plains of Minnesota, and where is it gonna rest? It's gonna rest right in county boards across this state. And so we've, we've just gotta think this through a little bit, and I just don't believe internalizing it is the way to do it. It's, it's going to the community, it's drawing from that expertise, it's drawing from that interest out there that's powerful right now, and that can, and I don't understand why this Environmental Commission doesn't work, but if it doesn't work, and I'm not gonna throw any blame, but it doesn't work, and the people aren't coming to meeting, it's, it's on this board. I mean, if, if people don't wanna participate, then let's find somebody that does, and so on and so forth. We don't have the right expertise around that table, let's find the expertise, because it does exist in this, in this community, and we can make this work. I, I'm absolutely convinced of it. And frankly, we must make it work, because this is so important, as we think about this from the standpoint of the future and our county and, and the youth, they're depending on us, and they're depending, and they're watching tonight, and they're, they're, they're going to wonder. And I hope the headline tomorrow is not that we, that we abolish the Environmental Commission. I think that would be an awful message. And so, Mr. Chair, and we'll have more discussion about this, I suspect, but hopefully, let's just think long and hard about this decision.
I think it's a false argument to, to project that we are internalizing by, by setting up task forces, we're doing the exact opposite, we're, we're doing exactly what you're describing as you want the Environmental Commission to do. We're, we're finding an issue, then we're finding people who have knowledge about that issue in the community, gathering their input, and then advising the board with it, instead of having a board made up of two county commissioners, two township officers, and six people of a variety of interests, and then ask them to become an expert on one thing that maybe one or two people on that board have any knowledge of. So, so instead of just continuing to do that, where we have this big, random hodgepodge of people who all like the environment, have concerns about the environment, but have no expertise outside of maybe one or two things, we're saying, well, let's make a change, let's find people who have expertise and have them advise us, seven who, who have a variety of interests and a variety of expertise. It's not internalizing, it's externalizing with, with a direction.
Chair, just to clarify, I think it's internalizing it to, to this board. I don't disagree with the, with the expertise. I, I think the, the, the technical expertise, the task forces can well be developed and, frankly, monitored and polished and worked within the Environmental Commission itself. I, I think to do it that way makes a much more powerful and, frankly, interesting Environmental Commission. I can see an Environmental Commission in Homestead County running two or three task forces at a time. There's enough expertise around here, I mean, we think they need staff, you know, staff support. I'm not sure altogether that they do. I think good people can meet around tables and, and, and make recommendations or bring them to the Environment Commission. They can polish them off, and they can bring them into this county board, and we've got them, we've got a much more powerful and much more community or, or, you know, orientated sort of approach to this. And, and the community, I think, begs for, for, for that kind of an approach as we approach environmental problems going forward.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think that this conversation is a very good sign. It speaks to a tremendous call for action. It's essentially a stimulus that we're responding to as a board, that you're responding to as a, as a community, and that, that, that staff are responding to, and it, it shows us clearly that this is extremely important, that we feel passionately about it. I think Commissioner Tine, you're exactly right when you said that we are a seven zero board, caring deeply about the environment. There's no question about that, and that was reflected in, in your comments as well, Commissioner Rossman. So I'm, I, I'm pleased that we've got a, a passionate, urgent, a conversation going which, which looks like it's headed in the direction of a plan, further discussion, and the immediacy, the urgency that this issue requires. Mr. Chair.
Well, just a second. I would like to say some things, if that's okay, because I know you've had the floor quite a bit tonight. Thank you, I appreciate that. You know, we, we're talking about two things here, well, maybe a couple of things. One of the things we're talking about is perception. And, you know, perception, it always bothers me, because there are people that try to create the perception, and the perception that some people create is if you disband or transfer or transition the Environmental Commission, then you don't care about the climate. That's a dangerous perception to start, because basically it's blackmail. It's like, if you do this, then I can tell that you're not interested in climate. Now, that's really the wrong way to go about this. I believe the correct perception is, is that the Board of Commissioners is extraordinarily interested in the climate issues. And so therefore, the second part is, is that, how are we going to do that? How are we going to attack these issues? How are we going to study these issues? Now, we have had a model, which I can tell you, doesn't work. So one of the choices I could make is, just to satisfy your perception or the community's perception, I could say, all right, we'll continue the climate commission as it is, and nothing will happen. You'll go away, you won't check on the commission as you haven't for the last 20 years, and you won't know what's going on. But you'd be happy, because we have still the commission. I don't think that that's the right way to go about it. What I would rather say is, let's transition into something that we can go on. Now, the other argument is, is that you say, well, you don't have a plan, you don't know what you're gonna study. Well, neither does the commission. They haven't had a plan for all these years, they still don't have a plan. So they would have the same problems that you're talking about, what's your plan? So the plan that I hear is that you, you might say, well, we have a climate crisis. Great, okay, that's, so, so that's what the commission is gonna say, do something about the climate. That's not getting to the root cause of what causes these things, which the commission wants, what the Board of Commissioners want to act on, is to start taking these pieces of that, that we can do something about, and then coming up with a decent plan with the advice that we have to do these things. So my brief list of things would be including things such as the future of the energy production at OWF. Well, how, what are we gonna do with the electricity? Are we gonna make biogas? And are we gonna store hydrogen? So who has the expertise on storing hydrogen? Can you step forward and tell me what I should do right now? No, I'm gonna have to get somebody to help us with that and find out, is storing hydrogen a viable option for Homestead County? Or should we be looking at something else? We have topsoil erosion abatement. And, and are the same people going to be dealing with soil erosion abatement that they are with storing hydrogen? Subwater shed projects to keep our waterways clean, trails and recreational corridors, protecting migratory corridors and preservation of sensitive lands, soil health, energy storage, managing wood waste of all the hundreds of thousands of trees that are dying, which are slaying, they're rotting, putting methane into the air. Should we be doing something about that? Can we convert that into an energy project, product that we can actually use someplace Replacing the energy contracts with RPU and SIMPA that's gonna come up in 2030, something we have to look forward to, of how we're gonna do that. And then we have community environmental education. That's a whole nother area. So how many people put their yard clippings back on the yard? Why are they asking us to pick up their yard waste and, and doing something with it? Where's the environment in that? How many pesticides do you put on your yard? How many bees and pollinators have you killed off by doing that stuff? Isn't there some education that we should be doing about that? Because that all affects climate and climate change. Reducing the amount of materials that's not recyclable. All right? So how many of you go to QuickTrip and get your Coke in a plastic bottle and don't think anything about it? Those are the kinds of things that we can do something about, that we want some advice on, of how we're gonna do all those things. It's not just converting our cars to electric. There's a whole range of issues here. Environmental equity, there's a whole nother issue that we have to look at. And then we have in parks and recreation, forest expansion and management, because maintaining our forests and healthy forests is part of the climate and part of reproducing oxygen for all of us to breathe. So those are the things that I get concerned about, that the commission hasn't done anything with, is not capable of doing anything with, and hasn't done anything with. And that's why we have to move to a different kind of a process to break these things apart, start at some point, even though we may not have identified it tonight, I think that you can tell that we have many issues that we are going to be identifying, and that we have to move forward on, and we have to get expertise of doing all those things. So that's why I am concerned that staying the course as we are right now isn't going to get us where we wanna be in the environment. But I do appreciate your patience listening to me. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair, first of all, I've observed we've been on many committees together all day, and you've been very quiet, and I've been very talkative, but I think you've just about made up all the airtime I have.
Yeah, you know, the timing is everything.
It is everything. So I, I would say, I, I agree with you, that it is time for action, and, but I, what I would believe is that this is insufficient action to simply eliminate the Environmental Commission, because it isn't working. So what I'd like to do is, I would like to move to table this discussion until a, a date certain, and I'm open to whether that's our next meeting or in May, or our second meeting in May, and I would like staff to come back with a defined framework and structure for how we're going to proceed on our top three environmental priorities. Now, we, as a board, we've talked about a whole bunch of things, you've got a major list there, but we haven't agreed on what our top three priorities are. So I, I would like to, I would like to move that we table this discussion and ask staff to come back in May with a structure that will help us advance this year our top three priorities, environmental concerns.
I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion.
Point of information, just on.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Would that include then the, for the near term, the continuance of the Environmental Commission?
Mr. Chair, the way I'm intending my motion is that we're tabling this, this decision until the staff come back in May with a framework. I don't know what that framework will be for how we are going to move forward on our top three priorities this year, and I'm assuming the framework would be something we would choose to use long term.
Question for Commissioner Cascaden, who determines the top three environmental concerns?
I think we have our physical development committee, we have our, our staff have been working on this, they've given us a long list of issues. We've got a board retreat, we've got some board retreats coming up, we could spend some time at board retreats on them. I mean, our, I mean, as we talk about the Environmental Commission not functioning well, Commissioner Tine's right, it's on us. It's on us. But it's, it's also on us that we, we have, we have a growing awareness about, and a growing concern about environmental issues, and our staff have done some really good work on starting to outline the climate issues and looking at opportunities, but we haven't really said, okay, this is, we don't have a strategic plan. And that's really what we need. We need a strategic plan, and what are our top strategies, or what are our top priorities? What are the strategies to get there? And what's the framework? And it doesn't necessarily have to be just a single Environmental Commission, could be, but it could be, you know, it could be a variety of things that we want to assign. I mean, you've got staff working for a year on the, the climate scan, right? We've got staff working for a year on the open space. We've got staff working for a year on our waste of energy future. They're all separate, but they're not that detailed. So I, I just feel like we, we can say, okay, we're gonna eliminate the Environmental Commission today, but we still don't have a plan. So I'm trying to get us to the place that we, we at least take some steps forward that are beyond just, we're not gonna continue doing what we've been doing, here's what we are gonna do.
So I'm gonna oppose this, just because I see this as just a little baby step forward, and, and again, we're putting staff in a position where we have not provided them the direction. So, so essentially what I'm hearing is, okay, we're, we're gonna move towards getting rid of this Environmental Commission, we want to hear what's next, and by the way, in two weeks, when you tell us what's next, you're gonna hear it about an hour ahead of time when we get done with the Physical Development Committee that meets prior to that board meeting, that will give you some direction on what's next. I don't think that's fair at all. I think that the time is to rip the Band-Aid off. I think that the time is to rip the Band-Aid off, okay? Now, now we could direct staff, let's move forward on this and this. Okay, when we got, we've got motion on that, then we can see if we have the bandwidth to handle this and this. But if we just take these little baby steps, we've accomplished nothing.
My fear, Commissioner, is more that we're just going to just say it's gone and now we'll take our time to decide what's next and what's the framework, whatever. So I'm, I'm, as I said early on, I accept the recommendation that our current Environmental Commission is not functioning in a way that's productive. I also believe we need an overall framework that will help us get citizens involved with expertise and citizens involved with their, with their opinions, that they're not just, that we confer with them, that we collaborate with people on developing, like we collaborated on the, on the task force on, on the waste issues, and that we make a, we make a commitment to moving forward. I fear that we're, once we've done this, we're just going to go back into like, oh, okay.
I just don't see this as step forward. We could, we could table it, it could be debated, but I guess too late to worry about that. I, you know, with, with this motion, my hope, my plea, my urging will be that amongst those three or whatever it turns out to be, that, that we have a reinvention, if you will, of the Environmental Commission. I think the Environmental Commission can work. This one doesn't, I think we can all agree on that. But I, I don't believe that a properly constituted Environmental Commission cannot work. In fact, they work all over this country. And they ought to be able to work here in Olmsted County, if any place on earth, with the institutional expertise that we have in this community. Thank you.
All right. So we have, we have the motion to table this and for the staff to come back with the top three. Does that?
With the framework, with the framework.
The framework.
And with, the framework could be the commission, a framework, and with the top three priorities for action this year.
Okay, all right.
That'd be our responsibility for the top three?
Well, I, you, you can certainly talk to the staff about what you think your top three should be. All right.
I would just reiterate, I guess my, I absolutely agree. We need urgency behind the issue. We need timelines, but we all need to engage in that. So giving the staff 30 days to come back with a plan in three, I would hate to see a not well thought out plan, just because they know we've asked for something in 30 days, because this is, it's broad, it's really messy. We're going to be the ones who will need to fund the initiatives, support those top three, et cetera. So we need time to provide input and have some pretty in-depth discussions. So I, I struggle with a 30-day timeline to get that done in a manner and to give it the time that it needs to have the best discussion.
Okay. I just. I think it's time to call for the questions. So all in favor of the motion before us to table this and the staff to come back with the information, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
No. I think it's a five-two in favor.
Five-two?
I think so.
It was four-three.
Four-three, it's four-three, sorry, thank you very much. It's a four-three, but it still carries.
No, it's defeated, defeated. Perhaps you want to do a roll call, Mr. Chair, but I heard, I heard for it in opposition.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it well enough, so let's do a roll call. So I'm asking for your roll call vote on the motion before us. Do you wish to delay by tabling this motion? So.
Mr. Chair, the clerk can call the roll.
Yes.
Would you like me to say the motion again?
Yeah, yeah, say the motion.
The motion was to table, right?
Yes.
And have the staff come back at a future date with a framework.
Okay.
Three priorities.
All right.
Was the 30 days as part of the motion, correct?
Within 30 days.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner Rossman? I vote no. Commissioner Mueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tine?
No.
Commissioner Wright?
No.
Commissioner Kiskaden?
Aye.
Commissioner Padolkey Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Sandham?
Aye.
I vote passes.
Yeah, so it's four-three, that's what I thought. Okay, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioners.
I just wanted to close. I, for me, it's, I started off and I went out on a limb and said, I didn't, I don't think this is about the what, as far as the importance of the environment, because you all restated that, it's more about the how. So we will take your direction and come back, deal with the framework.
All right, well, thank you very much. So we are moving on to letter five C, the Municipal Advisor Agreement with Baker-Tilly Inflation Reduction Act.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Wilfredo Roman Catala, I'm the Olmsted County Chief Financial Officer, and I know you have heard a number of very important and complex issues this, tonight, this evening. Hopefully, I can provide you with an easy one. So as you know, the federal government has put together the Inflation Reduction Act, or what is called the IRA, under the federal policy about energy. And they're making, for the first time, tax credits or some kind of federal cash subsidies for local governments like Olmsted County to fund renewable energy-related capital assets. So the complexity comes in the, in the part of how do we achieve that, since we don't have experience doing that. So in order to claim the direct credit through the IRA, we need to, first of all, put the, fund the project, pay for it, put it in motion, that is viable, and then we can submit paperwork to the Internal Revenue Service, and that's kind of the scary part for me, to get reimbursement for it. So basically, what we're saying is we need to cash flow the project, and then eventually we can get some reimbursement. What we understand at this point in time is that about 30 to 50% of projects could be, that certain projects could be eligible for, or the cost of those projects between 30 to 50%, I'm sorry. So for example, if you have a project that is eligible for, for the tax credit, and let's say this project costs a million dollars, so potentially, we can receive back anywhere between $300,000 to $500,000 for that million dollars that we invest upfront. We have concluded, you know, in conversation with the Physical Development Staff and myself in the Finance Staff, that, you know, number one, we don't have expertise, we don't have the internal capacity to engage in this new endeavor. So we're asking permission to engage with an external consultant, Baker-Tilly Municipal Advisors, this is what they do for a living, they, they, they consult in these type of services. And then they can provide us with a professional and technical expertise so we can feel successful that we are putting together a proposal in front of the IRS that will get us those credits back, rather than pretend that we know or that we can read a lot of manuals, they change often, as is with the federal government, and then ended up in a precarious situation where we might not be able to, to collect the funds. So in front of you, what there is, is a, is a proposal to engage with Baker-Tilly Municipal Advisors, so at least we can explore one of these significant projects, which is the geothermal process within the, the Public Service Center and as well as the Public Safety Training Center as well, the geothermal fields there. So we can explore that as one of the options. I know this came in, in front of the Administrative Committee on the fourth of this month, and they gave us at least the opinion that let's start with a shorter scope, which is those geothermal fields, and then limit the agreement to, to cap it at $155,000. So that's what is in front of you. But as you have in front of you as well, there's a proposal with the many different phases of the services that can be provided by Baker-Tilly, some of those services might not be needed, right? What we have is kind of an estimate, depending on the level of effort. And I also have, I believe he's still online, he's been waiting since, since early this evening, Doug Baldassari from Baker-Tilly, just in case you have any specific question that you would like to ask of him.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
One comment that was brought forth when this was discussed through committee was that Baker-Tilly is also assisting other municipalities and counties. So in utilizing them as a consultant, we have access to broader projects and thought processes that they're engaged in, that after we get through this initial project and we're satisfied with their work, have access to that wealth of knowledge in other projects that they're assisting with. So I think that's a great attribute.
Very good, well said.
Sure.
Yes, go ahead.
And I'm, I'm, I'm fine with this, just maybe because I waddle in this world, but the legislature yesterday passed a bill which amongst other things included $112 million for matching funds, as was pointed out in test, or in the comments this tonight. And that'll be administered by the Department of Commerce. The Department of Commerce will also work with Minnesota proposals going forward under the Inflation Reduction Act, and they will make recommendations along the nine, not only with respect to whether or not they're going to match funds on the project, but whether or not it ought to qualify for the, what we call the direct payment, this, this tax matter that we're talking about here tonight. So, so there's a little bit kind of working in concert with both Baker-Tilly and the Department of Commerce as we propose initiatives. The Department of Commerce can be helpful for us as well in this, in this venture.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, if we choose to pursue matching funds.
Right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Baldassari? So the question would be, Mr. Baldassari, how familiar are you with these kinds of government programs and your past successes? And maybe you can't hear me.
Froze. Just as, just as.
You're thinking about it.
It was too hard of a question. All right, well, we have technology failure.
I apologize, my computer just, it just shut down, so I'm sorry. If there was a question, I'd be happy to answer it.
Oh, can you refer to a question, Commissioner Wright, please?
Well, my question was, is that your experience, in your firm's experience with these kinds of government programs?
Oh, yeah, our, our, our firm has a lot of experience, not only with the Inflation Reduction Act, but also with the, the American Rescue Plan and the Infrastructure Act, and specifically with these tax credits, which have been around for about 15 years. We have extensive experience working with these with for-profit entities. As a, I'm not sure if you're aware of these, most of these credits have been around for a while, and it's just now with the direct payment function that municipalities, counties, and other not-for-profit entities are able to take advantage of, of these clean energy tax credits.
Thank you.
So yes, we have experience.
Thank you.
So are we looking for a motion?
Yep, we're looking for a motion.
I'm, I'll move to enter into an agreement with Baker-Tilly.
Second. All right, we have motion to enter into an agreement with Baker-Tilly to help us with the Inflation Reduction Act. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Board and committee report.
Mr. Chair, we have Three Rivers.
Thank you very much for the reminder. Oh, my gosh. So we have, yes, I'm so sorry, thank you. Three Rivers, where did I get that? I'm sorry, it's, it's right here in front of me and I missed it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Jenny Larson, I'm the Executive Director of Three Rivers Community Action. Some of you know me because you have participated on our Board of Directors, others of you I'm meeting for the first time tonight. And when the staff asked me to just come and do an update to you, I thought this was a good opportunity to kind of give you just a little bit of an overview of our organization and then really focus in on some things that we're working on in Olmsted County. So what I like to start with is a video, if it works. We, we like to hear from the clients that we serve, and they're the voices that you don't always get to hear at your meetings. And so we recently recorded a video of, of a client who has worked through some of our programs, so we're going to start that.
Prior to me being in Three Rivers, I was homeless, couch hopping, living with this friend, that friend. And I had my oldest daughter, who's now 12, and we got into like a little two-bedroom through Three Rivers, and then things kind of like took the turn for the better. Like I know how to navigate a lot by myself, and I'm more independently living than I was when I first started out. In a sense, I was a very immature, very hot-headed, didn't know how to handle like my mental health. So I feel like now in life that I'm on the right path to success.
At Three Rivers Community Action, we strive to address multiple community needs and provide the best support services possible to individuals of every age and families of every size and background in Goodhue, Olmsted, Rice, and Wabashah Counties. We do this by developing affordable housing, operating public transportation, educating children and supporting families through early childhood programs like Head Start, advocating with the client to prevent or resolve homelessness, providing older adult services like Meals on Wheels and volunteer transportation, improving the energy efficiency of homes, preparing a new generation of homeowners, and providing direct support services like energy assistance.
They're just my best friends. If it wasn't for Three Rivers, I wouldn't be where I was today. I have the strength and the skills to want to advocate for other people and help them be positive individuals in the world and like go for their goals and their dreams. And I work with the housing advocates here, I utilize the bus system. My kids even go to Head Start here, all three of them have attended Head Start, the list goes on. If you contact Three Rivers, somebody's going to be there if you need somebody to be there, that you're going to find somebody who's compassionate and really wants to see you succeed in life. I'm going to pay it forward to the next people.
So that was one of our clients who has worked with our programs in Rice County, which she utilizes some of the services that we don't actually host ourselves here in Olmsted County, but we certainly participate with the partners who are providing programs like Head Start here in the county. So just to back up a little bit, Three Rivers is a nonprofit, we've been around since the 1960s, the war on poverty. Our goal is to address the causes and conditions of poverty. And we do that in a variety of ways, you can see all the wide array of programs that we offer. But we really do that in conjunction with, with our partners. And so our Board of Directors is made up of county commissioners, we have a county commissioner on each, from each of our four counties on our board. We also have people who participated in our programs on our Board of Directors. And the idea there is that we can't address the causes and conditions of poverty without hearing from people who've actually experienced it themselves. So it's really important to us to have, to have their voices be heard and have them participating in our programs. And then the remainder of our board is made up of community leaders. So you heard, we're in four counties, we're about a $19 million organization, we've got 160 staff scattered across our four-county area. In 2022, we've served about 17,000 people. You can see this was a big increase over the last couple of years. Two years ago, we served 14,000 people. So you can see we're really, we're able to reach more people. Part of that is there's been more resources for us in the last few years, and part of that is that the needs aren't going, going down, they're going up. So we're just seeing more people in need, more people needing access to services. The numbers in Olmsted County, you can see of those 17,000 people, over 8,000 of them are here in Olmsted County. It's equivalent of about 3,200 households. Most of the households that we serve are below 200% of poverty, but you can see at least half of them in Olmsted County are under 100% of the poverty level. Most of the people we serve are renters. Most of the people we serve are renters, but we also work with a lot of homeowners. And then you can just see some of the demographic breakdown that we have as well. We serve kids, older adults, people of color, people with different ethnicities, people with disabilities. The Energy Assistance Program, we talked about the need to save the climate. One of the things that people really have a hard time with is the cost of heating their homes. So we operate the Energy Assistance Program, the federal program, that helped about 3,200 households in the county with making payments to their energy bills. But also part of that program is that we are doing emergency repair and replacement of people's furnaces. So if somebody who qualifies for the program loses their heat in the middle of the night or in the middle of winter, if they call us, we can get a repair person out. We can get the furnace repaired or replaced. We did 100 of those repairs or replacements here in Olmsted County last winter. This year, we also administered the new Water Assistance Program, helping people with water bills. And we're hopeful that that program might continue at the federal level. It's funded probably one more year. Minnesota hasn't spent all the funds yet, but we're working on getting those funds out in the county as well. And then just a fun side project that we do a couple of times a year, we work with the Plumber and Pipe Fitters Union. Some of you are in this photo, I think, where the volunteers from the union come out, work with our clients, people who are enrolled in our programs, and help them with some emergency, small repairs that they can do to kind of keep mostly, we work with mostly older adults at that program. But they come out twice a year and do some repairs. Get together on a Saturday, and they go out and work with a lot of households on that day. Just kind of a fun day. Housing advocacy. So one of the things you heard in the video is that people, they experience things in their lives that make their housing unstable. And so one of the things we work hard on is to make sure that we are keeping people housed, preventing evictions, getting people rehoused if they've lost their housing or at risk of losing their housing. So we have a lot of different programs. I'm not going to go through what all of these mean, but we do homeless prevention programs. We have a Homework Starts With Home program, which I'll talk about in a second. Rapid Rehousing, so that's getting people who have faced eviction or are currently homeless back into housing as quickly as possible. Permanent Supportive Housing, so people who need, they need just a little bit more assistance. They might need a case manager helping them stay stably housed. So the person in the video that you saw, she is in our Permanent Supportive Housing Program. She has a case manager from our team who's working with her on a regular basis, checking in with her, making sure she's doing everything she needs to do to stay stably housed. So we're really excited because we are working very closely with Rochester Public Schools and your county staff to work within families in the school district who are experiencing homelessness. So we've got a grant with the Homework Starts With Home program. We're using that in conjunction with county resources and other state resources to really address families who are in the school district who are experiencing homelessness. So that's been a really great program. Our staff person is in the schools with your county staff people. We've done direct assistance in homeless prevention. We've prevented evictions. We've rehoused people. We operate the Countywide Housing Community Network, which is the organization that comes together with all of our partners and does the project community connect once a year to bring all of the resources to one spot for people who are facing housing instability. Photos just some of our staff at an event. Homeownership. So one of the things we like to think about is what's a permanent solution to addressing poverty? And one of the best things we can do for people is to help them build assets. One of the best assets we have in this country is homeownership. And so we have a very robust program where we provide homebuyer education and homeownership coaching. We also have a down payment assistance program. We operate the Family Assets for Independence in Minnesota program. It's a match savings program. So if someone saves a dollar, they get matched $3 with state resources to save for homeownership. And our goal in this program is to create as many homeownership opportunities as we can, to create stable homeownership opportunities. And we're really trying to address folks who haven't had that ownership structure in their families before. So we're working with tons of first-time buyers, but also first-generation buyers. Many of them are people of color. Last year, nine households participating in our program completed their home purchase in Olmsted County. Housing development is something we also do a lot of. We own and operate and have developed 882 units of housing across southern Minnesota. In Olmsted County, we've done single-family rehab and resale. We work very closely with First Homes program here. And then our staff were the project managers for the Jeremiah Project, which we're really proud of. Our staff helped facilitate the funding for that program and get them all the way through construction. We are currently working on two exciting projects here in Olmsted County. The Eastside Project on Fourth Street, just across the, a couple blocks down from here. We've been working on for many, many years to acquire tired, single-family homes on the transit corridor. We're really excited about that. And have been working very closely with the neighborhood on what we want to do there. But the idea is we've got a block of homes. Now, we've got site control of the entire block. We're renting them out while we wait for funding to come through from the state of Minnesota. But our goal is to take those single-family homes down and put up some density, put up 40 units of housing, a mix of workforce, and some housing with support services. Close to downtown, people could walk to work, or it's on the transit corridor, and they can take public transit and get to where they need to go. So we'll be applying for that this July to the state. We've also been working with Bear Creek at their Crossroads Campus. They've been doing a lot of different housing projects out there. And we're working with them on a small piece of that campus to do a new construction project. And our goal there, or our plan for that, is about 48 units of affordable rental housing. Again, a mix of units, but we want to set aside some of the units to serve people with disabilities and people who've experienced homelessness. So what's next? The two projects I just talked about, we're working hard on getting those through the local processes with the city, with the Housing Coalition here in Rochester, and getting those ready for application. We apply in July, and we'll find out in December if we're successful at getting those funded. We're also working very hard on the expansion of the Family Homeless Prevention Program. And so this is a program where we get a little bit of money to help prevent people from losing their housing. It's emergency rental assistance primarily. And we get a chunk of money every quarter. It gets released quarterly. Within the first week of the quarter, our funds are completely gone. So the legislature has already passed $50 million in an expansion to this program for two years. And they passed it ahead of the rest of the budget because they want this money to get out quickly because they know the legislature saw, and we see every day how much this funding is needed. So we, we're currently staffing up. We're still waiting for the state to release it. It got passed almost three weeks ago. The state hasn't released it yet to us, but we're gearing up. We've got job postings out. We're hiring staff. And our goal, we're adding about six staff across our four-county area. Two of them will be here in Olmsted County. And the idea would be that instead of turning people away after the first week of the quarter, we'll have enough funds for the entire year to meet all of the demand for people who are really at risk of losing their homes. So really excited about that. Round two of Homework Starts With Home, that's the school-based program. We've applied for that assistance. We should find out this summer if we're successful, and then we can continue to work with our partners here on that program. The other thing that we're working on that we're pretty excited about is the homeownership program that I was telling you about. We just got funding from the Rochester Housing Coalition to add a mentorship component to that. So the idea would be, we really want to focus on BIPOC populations, finding people who have been successful homeowners, and have them support others in their community who want to become homeowners. And we will hire a coach. So we're adding a new team member to our homeownership team here in Rochester. And that person will be kind of matchmaking and working with the mentors and the homebuyers. And then we're really watching the FAME program, the Match Savings program. And we're hoping that if the legislature passes a big increase in that program, that we can marry the Match Savings program with this as well. And then if people start saving for homeownership, getting trained, doing what they need to do to build their credit, that they'll have saved up a down payment as well. And then the last thing I just want to mention, we are being evicted from our office space over in the old Wonder Bread building. And we have just gotten approval from RCTC to lease a suite of offices at the Heinz Center. And one of the reasons we're excited about that is because we're really going to be co-locating very close to other services. So our clients can kind of have a one-stop-shop area, county across the road, workforce development in the same building, and really have access to a lot of services. And those are the partners we work with the most here in the county. And so our plan is to move into that space in June. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, but I just want to thank you all for your service to the residents of Olmsted County.
Anybody? Yes.
Yeah. The legislature puts forth money on weatherization, and this year's bill has a lot of money. Do you administrate that, or is that...
Yes, we do weatherization, but not in Olmsted County. I don't know the exact history of why, but SEMCAC does it here in Olmsted County. We do the Energy Assistance Program here, so we work with SEMCAC, who does weatherization here in Olmsted County. But you're right, the legislature has put, has plans. We'll see what happens when it shakes out. But there's a lot of resources to have more state funding for the weatherization program, including getting homes ready for weatherization. So the federal weatherization program has a lot of rules, and we have to walk away from a lot of homes. And so some of the money at the legislature is going to be allowing us to get homes ready for the weatherization program so we don't have to walk away as much as we have in the past.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Chair. Go ahead, Commissioner. Ms. Larson, you also provide transit services, but not in Olmsted?
That's right.
So Rolling, is it Rolling Hills that you have? No, you have...
Hiawatha Land Transit.
And what counties does that serve?
So that's in Goodhue, Rice, and Wabash Counties. And then we, so that's the public transit. We have the contract from MINDOT to provide services in those three counties. We also have a volunteer transportation program where we are funded from SEMA and then medical providers, where volunteers go and pick up people and bring them to their medical appointments. And many of those are here in Rochester, so we're bringing people into Rochester.
You can't, you don't transport Olmsted County people into Rochester?
No, but we're talking about it because we're getting asked a lot about how could we expand our transportation services. And it's, I would say, housing, transportation are the things that get asked about the most. And transportation is something we need to keep looking at and how we can better partner. And I know there's plans to do that with the TMO, and we're looking forward to being part of that as well.
Any other?
Not only any questions. I've been on the board a couple of years in the past. I've really enjoyed it. It's a great organization, do great work.
Yes, I've also been on the Three Rivers Board, and you do an outstanding job. And I know that I've asked you several times, can you expand your services into Rochester? And I know that there's rules and stuff on that, but it would really be nice if we could figure out how to do that.
Yeah, thanks for that question. One of the things we do is we try not to duplicate services. So we came, Olmsted got added, we kind of merged with Olmsted when it was part of the county program in 2012, I want to say that was. And what we don't want to do is come in and then duplicate. So we're not going to come in and start doing Head Start because we have a very competent and capable Head Start provider in this county. But I think what we can do better and what we should continue to do is look at where are the gaps in Olmsted County? What's not getting done? And are there things that Three Rivers could come in and help facilitate or partner better and start doing more transportation as one? And I think there's some other things. So I'm happy to keep having those conversations.
Yeah, when I said that, I was speaking about the transportation because that's a real gap that we have right now. So, thank you. About our commissioner that's on Three Rivers, do you have any comments?
I do not. You are so thorough in your review.
Yeah, very nice. Thank you for your report.
Thanks for having us.
Glad to have you as a partner. All right, now we have to vote to take. We have Samantha Schoenfelder, who has applied for extension. And I'm sorry, I lost the name of the person that came for the human rights.
Yeah, I'm going to have to look into that for you, Chair Wright, because we actually are not quite sure how we ended up here today.
Well, it was a misunderstanding, but I was glad that we took him. But the preliminary one was in our packet because I read it.
Correct, correct. But we had not contacted him about coming yet, so I'm not sure how this happened, but I will find that out.
All right, well, I can't say his name then, but we know that he was here. And I'm going to ask for a motion to approve him. And Samantha, as soon as we find out his name, so.
Second.
I have a motion. Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right. So thank you very much.
Chair Wright?
Yes.
Somebody who is on virtually did catch the name, Dr. Morris Thompson.
Well, I'm glad someone was listening.
That's unavialia, yes.
And the first name was what?
Morris.
Morris. Very good. Well, thank you, whoever was listening. That was very nice of you. We appreciate your helpfulness.
That was unavialia, one of our fabulous administrative staff.
Very nice. Okay, now we are at the Board and Committee Reports. So Ms. Senjum, do you have a report to offer tonight?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Only that we, a couple of us, Commissioner Rosman and I and staff people were at the Capitol, like recently, yesterday, the day before. I can't remember when. Speaking on behalf of the Highway 14 interchange. Mr. Chair, I just have a question on maybe one of the administrative committee items today, and that's the repeal of the emergency public health order. And I don't know if you acted on that today, but the action requested is effective April 30th. And of course, we wouldn't meet as a board before then.
It changed in a second.
That changed. Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
You know.
Eight, eight.
Eight, sorry. Yeah, it's on the next board agenda.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, it will come to you on the, on the trip. We'll probably put it on consent unless we want to talk about it. But it'll be on the next regular board meeting.
Thank you. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
So may a second.
Second. Commissioner Padalki Smith.
I do have a couple of connected things to report on from the Human Services Advisory Board. Member at our most recent meeting members were updated on a Minnesota Student Survey Mental Health Summary. That's an anonymous statewide, school-based survey conducted every three years. And the results show significant increase in long-term mental health problems, emotional distress, self-harm, increasing particularly for female BIPOC, queer and trans, and youth who self-report as experiencing poor health. And in discussion, we agreed this was troubling and a tremendous call to action for Olmsted County and the entire community, bringing... for Olmsted County and the entire community, bringing in community partners and to continue to develop the best ways to support youth. One participant mentioned that it's really access to mental health resources that will be the key. And this dovetails into the, to the next piece, which was a presentation from Rochester Public Schools on School-Based Mental Health Scholars Program. They got a $1 million grant from the U.S. Department of Education, and the goal is to provide tuition and support to increase the number of qualified youth mental health providers in our community with 30 participants over five years. So that's kind of good news in response to some troubling survey results. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Kiskade.
Mr. Chair, the Human Services Committee met today and reviewed a variety of proclamations. This April and May are big proclamation months for honoring different kinds of disciplines. And so at your next meeting, you'll be, we'll be having proclamations for foster care providers, supervised visitation awareness, mental health awareness, and National Nurses Month. And we heard, we heard some really compelling stories from some of the staff that work in each of these areas. We also approved, and as did the administrative committee, applying for a Minnesota Department of Health Permanency Support Services Grant, which would be about, I'm trying to remember, I should look up the number, $600,000 over two years, with the potential of being a five-year grant. And the recommendation is that we hire a social worker and a mental health worker with those funds to supplement the juvenile mental health issues that we've previously been hearing about. We began, but did not finish, an overview of what staff's recommendations will be after conferring with a variety of people in the community about how to spend the opioid settlement funds that we will be receiving. And the recommendation will be that we move very quickly to spend money on both a short-term and a longer-term impact based on what has been demonstrated in mental, in the, by medical providers as having the greatest impact. And so the focus is on, well, you'll hear more about it when they come forward with the final recommendations, but we didn't actually complete that work today because we ran out of time. But those are kind of two major things. I also just wanted to mention to you that I have agreed to serve on another state work group. And that state work group is looking at the creation of a separate Department of Children, Youth, and Families, which would separate that out from the Department of Human Services. And counties complained that we had no role in this, and yet we're going to be having to do a lot of implementation. So they've appointed some county commissioners and some social service directors to confer with the Children's Cabinet. That legislation, which has been actively promoted this year by the Walz administration, does not appear, there's rumors that it doesn't have enough support to pass legislatively this year, but it is very clear that they're not, the Children's Cabinet is still calling us to meet. So they clearly are not intending to give up on this idea. If it doesn't pass this year, it may mean that we have more opportunity to be involved in designing what they would propose next year. So that's pending.
Thank you. Commissioner Kine.
Couple, a couple points. I just want to report that one of our Rochester Olmsted Youth Council members, Ischa Kapoor of Mayo High School, was, received an award from the Weppe Foundation of Minnesota as an innovator, and she's, she's one of many great young people that we have in that council. So kudos to her for being recognized for all her great work. And just as I was happy to report, I didn't know any of the detention centers too personally. I'd never been in the Federal Medical Center before last week. But I, last week I went to breakfast there and then they let me out, so that was good. But it was an interesting tour, and I found out, that's a great employer in Olmsted County. Over 400 employees work at the Federal Medical Center, and they all seem pretty happy. That's all I got.
Talking about the employees.
Yep, yeah, employees are happy.
Commissioner Mealer?
No report.
My colleagues cover the Human Services Advisory Board and Health and Human Services, so I'm good, nothing to add.
Very good. I have no report. The board keeps the chair hopping, so funny to do. Thank you very much.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second.
All right, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Oh, Mary. I said it's nice to see you.